We can stand for the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Say, we're going to begin this evening. Are you ready, Ms. West, or do you want to give? Okay, if you would like to take the seat, you're welcome.
Can I shake your hand first?
Oh, of course, of course.
And working with more work for the money today. Thank you. Leave to me.
Thank you. Say, welcome, Ms. West. Say, I'm going to start this evening. So I'm going to ask you, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? What makes you the best candidate for the appointment?
So, thank you for taking time out to, because I know you guys all have busy schedules on a beautiful summer day. And I'm looking forward to sharing more about myself and why I want to be appointed to the school board. So my children, actually, are the third generation to attend Wild Lake Schools. My mom graduated from Western in seventy-two. I graduated from Central in ninety-six. And my oldest will graduate from Northern next year, in twenty-twenty-five. So we've been longtime residents of the district. It was at Keith Elementary in the mid-eighties that I actually decided, I heard my calling to be a teacher. I remember my fifth-grade teacher, actually, when I told her, she asked me if I was sick and felt my forehead, which I thought was kind of funny back then, and asked me if I really wanted to be a teacher. She may have been right, but I do love what I do. I love my preschoolers, their creativeness, their inquisitiveness, the way they piece together information. Any teacher who's passionate about teaching knows exactly what I'm talking about. It's not just a job, that's a career or a calling. And twenty years ago, my husband and I decided to choose to purchase our home in Wild Lake because of the quality of education that our children would receive here. So in the past twelve years, my children have been enrolled in district. I have helped by now supporting the PTA, but volunteering at a variety of activities such as class parties or cheerleading, a homecoming dance. I've also taken on leadership roles, including running Disability Awareness Week at Glengarry and marching band representative, Wild Lake Northern. During Disability Awareness Week in two thousand and nineteen, I organized a school-wide kickoff assembly and a variety of assemblies, each geared towards a specific grade, such as music therapy for our lower ed elementary students, positive or cause for our third graders, and a Glengarry parent who is a Silver Paralympian and his spouse who teaches braille, share and teach our fifth graders about goalball. I also worked alongside Denise Dunn, who brought the disability awareness workshop to Wild Lake Schools at the Outdoor Education Center, where our fourth graders across the district had a chance to learn about various disabilities and actually have tangible, use of tangible assets that many of our special needs people would utilize, such as wheelchairs and walking kates, but, you know, so much more that I can't even tell you more about that because it's more than I can even imagine. And we are set to run it again in two thousand and twenty, but with COVID, we ended up having to shut it down and cancel it for that year. In two thousand and twenty-one, my daughter entered high school at Northern and chose to join the marching band, much to my chagrin, because all I could say was, my summer's being taken up and no family time. And I found very happily that Mrs. Hallberger very actively advocates a balance of work and school, or, I mean, work and family time. And so I found myself to be drawn to volunteering there more by, with home and away camps. And when they had the call for marching band rep, that I decided to answer that call and have been taking on the external duties, such as contracts, all the contracts for transportation, camp, entertainment, because these kids work hard and they should play hard, too, and their supplies, so much more. So I would like to be appointed to the school board because I want to continue serving and improving our district, providing amazing educational opportunities for all students across our district and those yet to come into our district. I believe you should appoint me to, because I am actively involved in our schools, have consistently attended Board of Education meetings over the last few years, and I'm passionate about what is occurring in the district. Also, as an educator, I understand curriculum and what the board would be approving for purchase, particularly at the elementary level, which provides the foundation of all learning.
So one of our primary responsibilities of the Board of Education is approving the district's annual budget. And throughout the year, we also review and approve budget amendments. Please describe your knowledge and experience with school budgets and budget reviews in general.
So in general, most of the public does not have the opportunity to have much experience with school budgets, especially in regards to a district as large as ours. Fortunately, we have an Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Mrs. Julie Omar, who is following the footsteps of Mrs. Harry Les, who I trust are both knowledgeable professionals with such budgets. Having attended many board meetings, I have become a bit familiar with the budget and the different types of funds. Although I have not dealt with a budget as large as a whole district, I have dealt with budgets in regards to running various programs such as Disability Awareness Week, band camp, and vacation Bible school at my church, not to mention my own personal budget for my home. I recognize that the budget being utilized is coming from our community of taxpayers as well. So overall, it appears that the district leaders have done a great job managing the budget, considering the general fund balance, especially with the influx of COVID money that's now subsequently decreasing in these funds. So we're not seeing the same type of budget issues that Birmingham and Ann Arbor are facing, because we have strong leadership in this district, both administrative and board teams. Our veteran board members have done a great job guiding the budget decisions through all the ups and downs and over the past several years. So if appointed, I would contritiously review and ask questions regarding the budget to make sure that all necessary costs are covered, but predominantly, I trust that our leaders are utilizing our funds appropriately. I understand the board seems to set the tone for the budget and the administration is then following.
Thank you.
Good evening. Community members with varying views and affiliations often bring requests to the district and the Board of Education. How will you ensure to keep all the consolidated school district students at the forefront of every decision? Please provide an example of one you had to make a decision for the whole that may have been in opposition to your personal beliefs.
So, as I consider this question, I felt like it had a more political directive to it, for which this is a nonpartisan position. I've never read for any elected position before, whether it be, nor have I even entertained running for a partisan position, like precinct delegate, clerk, or commissioner, or anything of the like. I haven't even held an executive board position for a political party, so I'm trying to understand this question, I like really think about it. In regards to making a decision for the whole, I supported the district in public education when schools shut down for COVID, while choosing to homeschool for my family, which was the best, for our family, because it was best for the greater community. Our support never left the district. I have applied for this district, for this position, because I believe in our district and all that it has to offer for our student body, and want to continue to serve our students and family, which will always be at the forefront of every decision. Will it benefit our students and families? Will it keep them safe? Will it give them opportunities that they would not have elsewhere? These are just a few other things I would consider when weighing difficult decisions that the district as a whole will have to bear.
Thank you.
In addition to the superintendent of schools, there is also a full cabinet supporting our superintendent. Please provide your perspective on the strengths and weaknesses of our current cabinet and what you see as your role in ensuring strong leadership for our district.
So we've had a couple of changes in our current cabinet recently, and with that, with more to come soon. So it's hard to say what the strengths are of everybody, because there's so many changes. But I trust that the recommendations are positive in the new cabinet, with the district leaders, that the new cabinet members are going to be wonderful assets to the team. So I look forward to getting to know them. Currently, the only weakness, I can only really say, is that I have heard many, from many across the district, by both parents and staff, concerned about the multiple resignations from board members and high-ranking administrative positions. Each time I've had a chance to assure them that really, these are just natural resignations, nothing to be concerned about, that it's usually relocating to another area or an opportunity to achieve a dream job. Congratulations, Dr. Lawrence, Dr. Bernie, on your new positions, Mr. Russo as well. So I think, you know, these are, it's not really much of a weakness, it's just opportunities for our higher-ups, which is really wonderful. And we get to ask people move to other positions, all our personnel have had opportunities to make other moves up the ladder as well. So I think this is wonderful. These are actually really great changes to have. One thing I would like to see with the cabinet is that many of the cabinet members do not always share what they're doing during the administrative commentary during the Board of Education meetings. And it's nice to hear as the public listens in of what they're doing. And it may seem really tedious and boring to them, what they're doing in their basic jobs, as a basic office work, but sometimes it's just nice to know, okay, what's going, what's going on in your world? Is it something you're struggling with or something you're excited about? So just sharing that might inspire one of our youths even in the future. So then, I would say, a strength that our cabinet definitely has is that I always know that if I have an email to email somebody about a concern or something really positive going on in the district, I'm always hearing back from people in a timely manner. So I think that's really wonderful, that I can always count on our district.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
What do you believe our current board does well? What do you believe the current board could do better? How have you contributed when joining existing teams to enhance what they do well and work to enact positive change?
So over the past few years, I have witnessed our current board do well at increasing transparency to the public by explaining how the board has arrived at decisions, as well as questions and discussions being held at table before voting, which I think has really helped gain the public's trust. One thing that the current board, I would say, could do a little better is understanding the difference between parents' passion and disrespect. Following the tragedies of Oxford and MSU, families everywhere were concerned about their children's safety in schools, as they should be. Many parents made public comments, including myself, and after an email exchange, some of my wording was misconstrued by a board member, as I continued to ask questions and make suggestions that I had discussed with the Michigan State trooper, on how we could effectively make our school safer in a cost-effective manner. It was never my intention to make this person uncomfortable, but I felt passionately about what I said, and I wanted to be heard. I wanted to make sure that our board member understood that a lack of action, if, God forbid, something should happen, they could be held accountable. We see that currently happening in Oxford, as parents are asking for the resignation of a couple of members, and I didn't want that to happen for any of our board members. I wanted to support them, and I wanted them to understand that there are consequences down the road, and, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we are being proactive as opposed to reactive. When joining existing teams, I try to seek understanding and assume positive intent. I am proactive when on a team or just passionate about something, and I'm willing to look at ideas from all angles and perspectives, research, ask professionals, and bring to the table the information I find for the team to determine how to proceed forward.
Thank you. Have you come to understand community issues or concerns as they relate to our school district? Further, what do you perceive your role is as a school board member, and how do you know if you're reaching all stakeholders for input? And finally, what do you believe the top issues are or will be for Wild Lake Schools?
Well, the role and responsibility of a board member is the what, whereas the administration responsibility is the how. So a board member is to help follow the chain of command. As a board member, Board of Education trustee, it's important, an important part of serving the public is truly listening to what are people's heartfelt concerns. There are always going to be individual concerns, but there are also concerns to the large group of people that people will have. Truly listening to them is key in establishing trust and a relationship with them. It does not mean that the solution will necessarily be what they want, but listening and acknowledging goes a long way. Concerns, community issues, may come in a variety of ways. We often see them come via public comments. I'm sure you receive a lot via email. So, but there are also times I see things being, that might need to be addressed that are being blown up on social media. I feel like it really gets blown out of proportion sometimes, and so sometimes it's easy to say, you know, like, how to calm people down, that, you know, like the resignations, I've seen that. And I would just kind of like, try to want, I want to calm people down and just make them realize that things are not always as they appear. I believe that having coffee hours would be a great way to just kind of help entertain, help the public understand opportunities that are, and what's going on in the district. So, you know, it doesn't have to be too often, but like, you know, even just once a, every quarter, you know, just quarterly meetings, allowing them to be able to share what's going on, what they're concerned about, and knowing that they're here, being heard. In regards to issues, I'd rather look at the potential opportunities that our incredible district has to offer with the multiple transitions that are happening. We have an opportunity to find ourselves under new leadership. We have the strategic planning process that's happening, and that'll set the tone for the next generation of learning in our district. It's an exciting time, and I'm excited to be part of it.
Thank you. Board of Education work as a whole and made you work in committees. What committees do you believe would be beneficial for Wild Lake Consolidated School District, and where do you hope to serve if appointed?
So by working in committees, we're able to serve our community with greater impact by having more time to delve into understanding and doing more deep dives and not take up as much time at the board table. I don't think anybody wants to sit here for four or five hours at a time, so be able to sit, you know, do something on the side and then bring it to the table as a whole is really helpful. I don't recall committees really being mentioned too much before the beginning of this year, but I think that they can be very useful, and I'm happy to help as needed. As noted before, I helped organize Glengarry's Disability Awareness Week. I've been a supporting member of the Parents Advisory Council, or PAC. Upon attending the Shredding Stars Award this year, I was very impressed, just the amount of people that, whether it's been children or other staff members, not even just teachers, but like, just people out in the community who've been really impacting our special needs community is just amazing. I understand our special education program continues to increase in population, and I'd like to be able to support the students, families, and staff that face many other challenges than the rest of our student population they don't face. And should we decide to have a special services committee, I'd love to help out with that. And then finally, I noticed that the two thousand and twenty-four bond allocation committee and existing board policy committee have both lost previous trustees to work on them, so I'd be happy to help on either of those subcommittees in their absence.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to welcome Dr. Becky Behrens. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what makes you the best candidate for this appointment?
Well, first, I want to thank all of you for this opportunity to address the school board. I value what you do as such an example of service and volunteerism, and I would consider it an honor to work with you if I'm given the privilege in serving on this board in behalf of our community. I am a firm believer that each generation needs to give something back to the rising generation to ensure their success and happiness. I want to see students feel well-prepared to enter our increasingly complex society, in that they are well-educated, that they have developed critical thinking skills, and are prepared to be good citizens who look to the well-being of others. I want to be appointed to the school board because young people and their success is a passionate concern of mine. I don't have any children, but the public education of young people is important to me. Now, I love gardening, as anyone who has walked by my home can see. I love playing classical violin and piano, as my neighbors will attest, sometimes very late at night. I love to travel. I could be doing all of those things, but I believe in giving back to the next generation and serving them as best as I can. As a diverse community member, I believe I would be well-suited to serving on the school board. I believe I bring a needed and unique set of skills that would be of value to the school board. I have spent my professional life in healthcare, as a practicing physician and as an administrative director in a hospital setting. I have cared for the health needs of many children through the years. I have worked with individuals and teens with mental health problems as well. I have learned from emergency department work how to respond in tense situations requiring fast deliberation and action. I know how to research and deep dive into issues and analyze them. I have worked with budgets as president of a women's organization and as a director in a hospital emergency department. I have the ability to help create a congenial work environment and collaborate respectively with others.
So you talked a little bit about budgets, so I'd like to get a little bit deeper into that if possible. So as you are probably well aware, one of our primary jobs is to make sure that we are approving the district's annual budget, as well as throughout the year reviewing and approving budget amendments. If you could describe your knowledge of the school budget process and budgets, budget reviews in general, and I'd like to hear a little bit more specifics about your budgets of the hospital and what you did there.
Well, I think our school district has demonstrated impressive results in its handling of the budget. You know, it's been recognized for twenty years by the Association of School Business Officials with its meritorious budget award. As for the administrative approach to the budget process, I think it is wise to prioritize the needs of the district. What are the needs versus the wants? Set realistic goals. I think strategic planning is vital with the outcome of setting goals. This will provide the foundation of how budget priorities would be set with the needs of students always at the forefront. Be alert to outside funding sources such as grants. Compare costs when determining purchases. Look at the diversity of our suppliers to be supportive of our community. Functional budgets, zero-based budgets, multi-year budgets, performance-based, they all have their pros and cons. I realize that school district budgeting is a complex area and is much different than budgeting in the private sector. Most school budgets, most school districts have to be very creative in working with limited funds and uncertainties in state funding contributions, as well as having to respond to state mandates. As far as my experience with hospital, and most specifically, emergency department budgeting, we had to make decisions about cost comparison for critical supplies that we needed. There needed to be decisions made about employees and what staffing needs that we had and what the budget resources were available to hire additional people that we needed. And these were some difficult decisions to make because of sometimes limited financial resources. So we had to have really detailed meetings with nursing staff and administration to come up with what our needs were and how we defined them in our emergency departments. An area that I think, in reference to our school district, that is especially important is professional development for teachers. Teachers need to feel valued, supported, and updated on current teaching methods and curriculum. This affects the hiring capacity in our district as well. As a board member, I would invest my time in learning from our district's team of business and budgeting experts. I would want to ensure that tax dollars are wisely allocated to achieve the most important goal, which is to make sure our students are well-educated. I understand that it is the school board's responsibility to set policy, sort of like providing the broad paint strokes, if you will, on the canvas. And it is the job of the superintendent and the cabinet to fill in the details, as they possess the know-how and expertise to implement the policies. I think a good partnership already exists between the school board and administration to accomplish policy initiatives, and I would like to be part of that team, as I have had experience in crafting policies and setting goals in other organizations.
Good evening, Dr. Behrens.
Good evening.
Community members with varying views and affiliations often bring requests to the district and Board of Education. How will you ensure you keep all the consolidated school district students at the forefront of every decision? Please provide an example of one you had to make a decision for the whole that may have been in opposition to your personal beliefs.
Well, one of my personal beliefs is that once a decision is made by a group, it is important to support it. None of us know everything or have expertise in everything, and so it's important to listen to a diversity of opinions and have a healthy, robust debate if needed. I think as board members, we can all agree that first and foremost, we all want what is best for the students. I believe that in every discussion we have as board members, we need to determine how will any policy or program or expenditure affect the students? What will be in their best interest, long-term, after they graduate from school and move on into adulthood? How can we help set in place a foundation of thirsting for excellence in our students? I believe in developing a culture of high expectations. The enthusiasm and zest for life in young people inspires us all, and we want to help channel that in positive directions. I remember a particular incident when I served as an EMS director, in which I had to navigate through different opinions as to what level of procedural skills we would train paramedics in. I even had to appear before the county commission to provide expert witness on this issue. I had to bring opposing teams together and listen to all sides. We came up with a solution that did not totally fit with my perspectives, but we worked together to implement it, making course correction. but we worked together to implement it, making course corrections as needed thereafter. It was a collaborative experience that we all learned from, and it turned out well.
Thank you.
You mentioned thirsting for excellence, so if you need to take a break and take a drink of water. Yes. It's a good segue.
Nice segue.
I'm all on board with that.
Write that down. Thank you.
Yes.
In addition to the superintendent of schools, there's also a full cabinet supporting our superintendent. Please provide your perspective on the strengths and weaknesses of our current cabinet and what you see as your role in ensuring strong leadership for our district.
Well, I think we have in our school district an impressive array of talent in our superintendent and cabinet members with expertise in many areas. They've done a good job in their day-to-day management of schools. And this pays off in making our school district one of the highest performing in the state in terms of students, teachers, athletic performances. I recognize that there are changes in our school district with a new superintendent, Dr. Michael Lons, congratulations, and other changes as well with more to come. And so I cannot weigh in yet on assessing our cabinet. I think we need to dig deeper in our district to monitor whether student outcomes are improving, and it needs to be done more frequently. And the outcome, whether good or bad, needs to be communicated more clearly and frequently to the community. I believe that I can play a role in ensuring that our capable leadership stays informed of our overarching vision as a school board. As the school board is accountable for seeing that well-thought-out policies are enacted, I believe that ongoing discussions with our administration can facilitate that. It will help strengthen them as we are aligned in our approach to issues, and it will increase their effectiveness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do you believe our current board does well? What do you believe the current board could do better? How have you contributed when joining existing teams to enhance what they do well and work to enact positive change?
Well, our school board does a good job in supporting teachers and students and in recognizing their achievements. There's no doubt about that. They promote a positive can-do sense of encouragement to our school district, and I appreciate that. They work well with the superintendent and the cabinet in a cooperative manner. Now, I know that this board initially struggled to find its footing in working as a team, but in my view, they demonstrate the ability to work together very constructively and with stability, and I am impressed with that. Yes, there are different opinions, but in the end, you all have the well-being, all of you have the well-being of the students at heart, and that shows in your deliberations and interactions. I would like to see the school board really laser-focus on policies to improve student academic achievement. In my view, this is more important than operational issues. I am interested in seeing the outcome of strategic planning that the board is engaged in. I believe it is important for the school board to have a clear vision for the school district tied to goals for student learning and achievement. I have engaged with members of the cabinet on academic and other issues through email and phone conversations to better understand their viewpoints and to share my thoughts as well, all in an effort to see how our educators can be given the resources to create good outcomes for our students. I have worked on medical teams and committees and healthcare. In some of my work on these teams, it was critical that we set into place correct protocols and approaches, or patients could die without this. I contributed by bringing relevant research to the table. Our mission was always to put patient care first and to be decisive and productive in our actions.
Thank you. How have you come to understand community issues or concerns as they relate to the school district? Further, what do you perceive your role as a school board member, and how do you know that you're reaching all stakeholders for input? Finally, what do you think the top issues are or will be for Waldeck Schools?
Well, I have become aware of community issues and concerns through conversations with parents and students, through attending school board meetings, and listening to public commentary, and through my conversations with teachers as well. I believe that a priority of school boards is to keep the public in public education and to be a conduit for delivering the concerns and values of the community into the schools. School boards are accountable to the community. As a school board member, I would want to know what services are we providing, to which students, at what cost, and resulting in what benefits? I am a data-driven person, and I also believe we need to use metrics to determine how well students are progressing. The top issues for the Waldeck School District, in my view, are as follows, and this is in no particular order of importance. The need to improve literacy and math scores so our youth are well-prepared for a college education or training in a trade. Ensure the safety of our students, physical in addition to mental health, well-being. Declining student enrollment paired with a shortage of teachers. This dovetails into how buildings are repurposed to accommodate these changes. Career and technical education. Making sure our students are provided clear and productive pathways to a trade of their choice. Special needs. This should be a top concern to ensure these students are not left behind and that their needs are met. Ensure that our top-performing students are rigorously challenged and are not forgotten in our drive to help students with special needs. Providing a good work environment for our teachers with encouraging respect for them from our students. Now, there are many other issues as well that could be added to this list. But with all of this being said, there are many opportunities ahead of us in this school district with new administrative and cabinet leaders in continuing to make this great school district even greater, I believe. Strategic planning, bond work, among other items, will be engaged in by very talented people in our district, and I would hope to be part of that.
Thank you. Excuse me. Boards of education work as a whole and may do work in committees. What committees do you believe would be beneficial to the Waldeck School District? And where do you hope to serve if appointed?
Well, I understand that committees are relatively new for this school board. Policy committee is an important one. A bond finance committee, special services committee would be useful additions as well. As the new administration gears up with their own unique perspectives, I welcome their input together with the school board on what committees fit with the strategic planning needs, and that will benefit our school district the most. Frankly, I would be happy to serve wherever I'm needed to meet the needs of the great students in our communities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening.
If you would like, you know, if you want a minute, you have a few. But if you would like to take the seat beforehand, you're welcome to.
Sure.
Oh, it was shut down. Shut down. There's construction everywhere. Let's be honest. Start? Okay. Uh, sure. Why not? Thank you. Yes?
Welcome, Mr. Smith. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? What makes you the best candidate for this appointment?
Sure. First, of course, I want to thank you again for the opportunity to interview you again for this vacancy. I know there are other candidates this evening that you were meeting with, and I hope, of course, I can kind of reintroduce myself once again. What makes me the best candidate? I am a lifelong resident of White Lake Township, married with two children, soon-to-be in the fall, now fifth and seventh grader respectively. I'm currently employed in the public sector while also running a small woodworking and handyman business on the side that I like to do for fun. I am a proud graduate of Waldeck Central High School. I hold a bachelor's degree from Grand Valley State University with a focus in leadership and diversity. I also hold a master of public administration from Oakland University and a post-master certificate in local government management. I have been a proud public servant now for the past 20 years, where I've worked with Oakland County, City of Colson, the Village of Wolverine Lake, and the City of Berkeley. And currently, I work for the City of Northville as an appointed certified municipal city clerk. So that's where a lot of my experience lies, is within that government. I have a strong desire to step up and give back for all and be a voice for all students and educators in this district. I want to advocate, of course, for the district and work with them, work with you, work with the board. I will bring sound leadership, empowerment, equity, good governance, accountability, and integrity to this board. That's what I feel. That's what I strive for in whatever I do in my own current professional life. And I will really be steadfast in doing what is right for all students. And that's really our goal here, is to be, to work for what is right for all students here. I know that the school board will have many difficult and important decisions short-term and long-term, and I believe I could provide some valuable insight with utilizing the 20 years' experience I have, also with my prior time on the board. And I feel I could bring those ideals to be a voice of the community.
One of our primary responsibilities of the Board of Education is approving the district's annual budget and then any amendments. Can you please describe your knowledge and experience with school budgets and budget reviews in general, if not school budgets? But I know you've been on the school board.
Yes. In many roles in my career, I've had to make tough decisions and submit budget amendments. That's one of the reasons I was working late tonight, actually, was because I'm working on my fourth-quarter budget amendments. I oversee currently five inner departments: the clerk's office, the building department, planning and zoning, and the elections department. So I oversee pretty much, it's a million-dollar budget that I have to look at. I have to make sure my revenues and expenditures are matching, no difference than the finance department here. And of course, with all of that, whenever I go through everything, I like to go through, get the priority, get all the facts, and listen. As I was, as we all know, inflation and other things that kind of come up. You think grants come in, you're applying for things as times go on. We all know within budget with school, with planning for infrastructure, whatever it is, we know that things come up when you get a bid, as you go out for the scope of work. Maybe by the time you actually implement things, things are going to go up. So you have to plan for a lot of those things and be aware that you evaluate all these decisions. Again, get all the facts, get all the data about it. I was president, as we even know, at the last public hearing, and just further reflected the problem that we must really push legislators harder to really make sure that we have our schools properly funded and that we know about the funding so we can properly fund in our timeline or statutory obligations. So again, personally, I have years of experience in budget prep. I was city manager at other communities where I was reviewing multimillion-dollar budgets, working with infrastructure improvements, working with sinking funds and millages and all these things that we have to deal with and all the time. And I understand what it takes that you have to go through with that eye of detail. And for the last 15 years, like I said, my roles, I can use that same eye that I have in that and really working with, asking the questions, evaluating, using the data that we have, working with the fellow board members to really make the best decisions for all students.
Thank you.
Community members with varying views and affiliations often bring requests to the district and Board of Education. How will you ensure you keep all the consolidated school district students at the forefront of every decision? Please provide an example of when you had to make a decision for the whole that may have not, that may have been in opposition to your personal beliefs.
Sure. When I think about this, I really think about balance. I always remain steadfast that every decision I make is for all students. And no, mine alone, my own opinions alone, were a body. That's how you vote. You decide, you decipher, you go through things, you discuss things. You might not always have seven, oh, five, you know, you're going to have differences in opinions, but you respect each other when you have that, those candid discussions that you have. And then you look at different ways that you can work with the staff and administration and cabinet to really come up with those things. And keeping in mind that we, as a district, have a lot on the horizon, a lot of different decisions. You're working with a lot of different voices that are coming at you. Again, you always have to keep in mind, what are the decisions that you're making are going to really impact the most students? That's what you have to look at, is the whole decision that you're making. That's at the forefront of every decision that you make. So I know I will never waver from being a champion of our public school system. I'll be steadfast in speaking up, working with it, but you got to listen. I know sometimes you have to make the tough decisions. We all know that we've had to do that. We've had to do it in the past. We're going to probably potentially have to make some tough decisions. But it's about getting impact, feedback from everyone. And I believe, again, in my years of experience professionally, I have made decisions that were tough and went against some, caused some feathers to be ruffled. But I think if you approach it where you get all the facts, the data drives your decision, and also if you provide enough feedback to the public that they'll understand why you made that decision, what's the long-term goal? What was, what were you trying to implement there? So I think, you know, look, we're all ever-evolving, you know, humans that it's good to be flexible at times. Life is like this fine balance that we have there. You have people that are coming to you, you know, at public meetings, at stakeholder sessions, whatever it is that are going to be there. In everyone's opinion, you know, they want to be heard, and they want to make sure that they are being heard on those things. And so you take that all into account when you're making those decisions here. And, you know, when you look back on it, I think as long as you make the decision, and I always say that you can rest your head easy that you made the decision based on integrity and data and the facts that you can actually say, that you can prove to say, hey, it wasn't, didn't make everyone happy, but in the long term, it's going to be a better situation that why we made that decision.
Thank you.
I'm the self-appointed drink person, so if you need a drink, that was a good time.
I appreciate it.
You can thank Dr. Behrens for that. In addition to the superintendent of schools, there's also a full cabinet supporting our superintendent. Please provide your perspective on the strengths and weaknesses of our current cabinet and what you see as your role in ensuring strong leadership for our district.
Sure. Of course, we, as we've been seeing, we have new faces on the cabinet. The makeup is even locally with principals and other leadership that's going on in this district. And, you know, I hear locally from a lot of concerned neighbors and resident, you know, are like, what's going on? But I think, you know, there's going to be a learning curve there. I think that's what we have. It takes a lot of patience and understanding. I believe those being tasked with the new positions are going to do well. But I think that's also, some of the strengths that we have are shared experiences that we can pull from, that they can pull from, that you work together. I think utilizing those, that we saw some that elevated to new positions, some that left, some that came on, different things like that. They can utilize in their experience to make what's best decisions, working together as a whole here on the board and implement some great new programs. And sometimes with new voices, of course, we have growing pains. I don't see those as weaknesses, but merely opportunities. I think that's always a thing that we see, you know, you always want to say what strengths, weaknesses. I always view weaknesses as opportunities for growth, and I think that's what we can work with. We can say that they will pull from those experiences, work together, and I think that's where we're at. I think my role in this, as well as the board, is to always provide evaluation, assessment, direction, really guidance on that, and really be the, have the guardrails up so that we can have that evaluation process to make sure that, hey, if we see that they're going a certain way, we can kind of reevaluate where we're going to make sure we're all on with what our goals are as a board and as the school district, so we navigate that. So, of course, the role of the school board is to oversee the education of students. And of course, we are at a new junction, I think, in this district. We're going to have a new superintendent, many new cabinet members. And I think, you know, what the decisions that we're making now are going to really push us into the future. And I think, you know, working together, you're going to have another new board member up here. So I think, you know, over these next few months, the summer months, there's a lot of training opportunities, and I think that's really useful to kind of get to know each other's voices, see where everyone's at and their experiences, and really kind of push forward. like, you know, just prep for it, you got to actually be ready for these things. So I really appreciate that when I see these meetings, that you're delving into the details, you know, that's where it's at, where you're looking at things with, you know, what curriculum we're going at, why we're choosing that, you know, with the, when we just had the literacy thing, where you're actually really delving into that stuff, and I think that's important, that we're ready, that you are ready for that, and I see that you're working there, you're working hard, your dedication shows to this, you wouldn't be on the board if you didn't, weren't truly dedicated to the students. I believe that, you know, with the new board, you're going to have some new voices. Of course, as you work together, you've, you've had your, your seven that were there, you've lost a couple now, so I think you're going to kind of relearn how you can work together and some of the strengths that you have there and some other things that's that give and take and learning, when's that time? And I think, you know, many times over the, over my time, I look at my different jobs and different fields that I've been in, you know, I've, I've often come in at different levels at, you know, where it's like, I've been the new guy many times, and so it's like, it's the opportunity to really realize, when is the time to speak up, when's the time to listen? So you really evaluate that time, you ask your questions when you want to make your voice heard, if it's really important to you or whatever it is, but really, you're trying to find your own voice when you come on that board, but then also, what is the voice of the body? And so you're kind of seeing where you fit in that. And many times I've served at that, where I've been in, where it's been a huge new influx of an exodus of people, other where I'm just the lone, brand-new guy. So it's kind of working through that, developing relationships with the cabinet, with the fellow boards, and I think that's really key, that you can kind of really get to know each other. That's important to do that. And within my own teams, like I said, I've been part of that, you know, you always maintain those goals throughout those things, what are your expectations with each other with that, at meetings, you kind of work through that. And I know one of the other questions will come up, but I think I've always worked with enacting changes, is kind of evaluating policies and say, hey, we as a new collective, what can we look at to make us better for the future? And I think that would be important, and I feel I could bring that to the new board.
Thank you.
Thanks. How have you come to understand community issues or concerns as they relate to our school district? Further, what do you perceive your role is as a school board member, and how do you know you're reaching all stakeholders for input? And finally, what do you believe the top issues are or will be in the Waldeck School District?
Sure. As we know, good governance is, is to lead and connect with the community. I talk to my fellow neighbors, parents, you know, at the crosswalk that we have, you know, whatever, clearly not anymore, but follow social media and attend my local PTA meetings. I think that's where you get the heartbeat of what's going on in the, in the district is just those talks. Social media is huge, huge that we have in this district. We have, you know, local club, like my Dublin group has its own Facebook page, we follow that, and they really present some good valuable dialogue that we can have, so I think that's important. But with these things in mind, I think we have to realize that we have to establish goals and policies and directions for operations and oversight, because not one board member has strength over the other. You are a body, and I think that's what we have to look at. And so you serve as the voice of the community, as a collective. You can, of course, answer questions and things like that, you know, it was always in the past, if there's a directed question to me, you answer it, but then you bring it back to the board so everyone is aware and privy to that same question that they have, and then the information that you can gather from it. In my current city, there's a fun thing that we do, and I think it could be implemented here, is that we do a coffee with councils, what we call it. But it's, so it's always less than quorum, so of course, you, that's not, but it's, it could be served as, it could be prior to the meeting. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to involve an informal time, time to that, so it's not just one board member, it's going to be three, two or three, whatever, that you can actually have a good informal dialogue with, with residents, with whatever questions that they have. Because a lot of times when we're here, as we know due to OMA, you can't have a dialogue when it's a public discussion. So a lot of times you see, and I hear from neighbors and residents, that they don't feel heard all the time because they don't get an answer quick enough or whatever it is, and they want that interaction. And I think that would be key, that would be a wonderful opportunity that we could have, that could have those meetings where we do and then kind of bring forth that, which is going to go into the other discussion with creating committees or things like that. My top issues, I believe, of course, have always school funding. I mean, that's the biggest one, got to advocate for the importance of per pupil funding. Enrollment and retention of students, we talked about, you know, are declining rates? Are they declining because of demographics or what's, are we missing out? Is, are people leaving? Why are they leaving if they are? You know, what are things going into that? Future strategic planning, as we know, for properly planning of the bond dollars that we got, got to make sure that we're out there. Of course, academics and well-being, make sure that we have programs that serve all of our district, make sure that we're not underserving anyone in our district, make sure that everyone is. From early learning, pre-K, K-12, and adult transitions, we want to make sure that everything is really serving our population. And of course, safety and security, make sure our schools are safe and with proper protocols in place. We need to work together, of course, to tackle these issues, and I believe it really is important to communicate these things out there. We have the tools there, but let's work as a collective. I think that's the importance of that, is that you can, we have other things that we can use in our tool, tool bag.
Thank you. Boards of education work as a whole and may do some work in committees. What committees do you believe would be beneficial in the Waldeck School District, and where do you hope to serve if appointed?
Sure. I was looking around the website and didn't see any, so I don't know if there's any ones out there. I know you had the review committee that just went on over these, these boards. In my experience, again, working in local government, that's what I can pull on for my 20 years, we utilize work groups, task force committees, like, that's our biggest, that's where we get a lot of the constructive work really done before it goes to the main council or to the board or whatever. So we focus on those work session studies that we can kind of work on, so it's like you kind of have committee work that can then go to the work session with the whole body and then kind of really delve into, deep into those discussions. Some of my suggestions that I kind of came up with, you know, because we hear a lot about so, safety and security committee, maybe a policy and procedures, administration or negotiations, I know where I'm at, I come from, personnel was, was kind of tailored as the personnel committee. Could you have a legislative committee? In my clerk world, we have a legislative body that's part of our clerks that all go to the, the state, and we have a lobbyist that we work with that deals with that, so you could have a legislative committee and talking about those things. I can have audit, the finance budget committee focuses on those things. You could have strategic planning and infrastructure. You could have curriculum and instruction, and then you could have an arts committee, kind of, you know, those are just some of those ideas that first came to me that we could have here. Of course, it's all dependent upon all of our time, all of your time that are on, you know, how much time do you want to devote? But it could be quarterly, it could be whatever it is, and then just really get the key stakeholders aware of what is going on, they can be welcome into it, it could be a part of the process, get principals in, you know, whatever it is that can kind of come in and meet with people so you know that they're getting the information there. And then what's always useful with a lot of these committees is that then you report back to the main board, board here at a regular meeting, and you say, this is what we discussed, and then it could be maybe potentially become an actual topic, an agenda topic for future as you kind of delve in through those things. That's what I'm used to, I'm accustomed to at my cities that I've worked with. I'd gladly be a part of those committees. I, I've written, I have years of writing ordinances, policies, and procedures for, you know, what's my work? I do that at the right minutes, I do all that stuff as a clerk. So that's right in my wheelhouse, and that's the things that have always interested me is when you look at things, you evaluate, you assess, say, hey, maybe this worked 10 years ago, but let's reassess this and maybe recreate the wheel on whatever this procedure is that we have. I don't know if this is my last question, or is, it is? Okay. Finally, I guess I'll just end with the, the final words that I like to say that, just to, I guess, get you to understand who I am a little bit more. So this is something like the little mantra that I like to read and live up to, I said, it's be the person who still tries. After failure, after frustration, after disappointment, after exhaustion, after heartache, be the person who musters up the courage to believe that a new attempt can manifest a new outcome. Be the person who still tries. So that is why I'm here again, once again, and hopefully, you know, I live up to that mantra this evening, and I look forward to being a part of the changes ahead in this district, whatever that, that might take, whatever a role or whatever position that is, but I would be honored, of course, to serve up here on that board again. And I mustered up the courage, I believe, to keep trying. Here I am again before you. So thank you for your time this evening, and of course, good luck to all the candidates. Thank you to the other, to them for taking their own big leap and applying themselves, because it does take a lot of courage to come up here and do that. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. Why do you want to be appointed to the school board? What makes you the best candidate for this appointment?
Well, I'm going to try and change up my answers tonight since you heard similar questions, but different, a couple of weeks ago. So first, I'd like to share a story about my grandfather. My grandfather founded funeral homes in the greater Detroit area and deeply, deeply instilled in us that if you have knowledge, skills, or capacity, it is your duty to give back to the community. Mix in with that, my mom, who was a public school teacher for nearly 50 years, 36 in Livonia, 13 and a half at University of Michigan Dearborn doing teacher prep. Public education runs deep in my veins. My sister is a former teacher and a current principal in a public school in Arizona. And yet, I have never been a teacher. I knew from the beginning I needed to be involved in education, but that my, my skills were better suited outside of the classroom. So I've been dedicated to closing what in education reform we like to call the achievement gap for the last 20 years. I can tell you the story of when I walked into a school that had inequitable facilities and the moment that I decided that this was wrong and that I needed to, in my lifetime, ensure equitable access and outcomes to all students. I think I've proven, since I moved here in 2018, that I'm very committed to Waldeck Schools and to making our schools the best they can be for our students. I've done that in various ways, what we'll talk through in my other answers, but I've put a lot of sweat equity into this district, and I look forward to continuing to put more in. Lastly, folks who know me, like who really know Susie, know that I build strong teams and working coalitions that are rooted in trust and that we strive to work in harmony, even when we might disagree. This plays out in the musical theater where there's one vision for a set and it's not going to work out, and we got to make a different set choice. To Michigan PTA, where we've had to make some tough choices over the years about how we lead for our state in alignment with the guidelines that the national organization provides for us. So I'm really excited to collaborate with all of you for the betterment of Waldeck Schools, and I think that's what makes me the best appointee tonight. Thanks.
So one of the primary responsibilities of the Board of Education is approving the district's annual budget, and then throughout the year, we review and approve amendments. Please describe your knowledge and experience with school budgets and budget reviews in general, if not school budgets.
I mentioned before, I've been working in education for 20 years. Most of that has been on the revenue side of public education, both K-12 and higher education. I've raised nearly half a billion dollars in discretionary grant funding to support innovation initiatives across the country. Because of that, I work with school budgets literally daily and am very comfortable looking at trends from reports that are either publicly available or that are given to me by school districts or schools, to ask questions, not necessarily because I believe I know the answer, but because I can see that something is here that requires a conversation. So I am excited to believe in our financial systems that, that management has in place and then review those reports and budgets and ask the right questions at the, at the right moment. I also want to say, I had the privilege of being at the public presentation for the budget, I don't know when it was, sometime in the recent past, and I, I hope that if I'm appointed to the board, that the board gets one layer deeper information on the budgets, more than just the categories. Because while I saw increases in some categories and decreases in others, it was hard to tell why, and I think the public will really value understanding one click deeper on where our financials are. So I would love to, if I'm on the board, I've also been told before that I make school finance sound kind of simple for people, so those who want to learn what school finance means, I would love to, to have those conversations with the public and then have a little bit more transparency in the budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Community members with varying views and affiliations often bring requests to the district and Board of Education. How will you ensure to keep all the consolidated school district students at the forefront of every decision? Please provide an example of when you had to make a decision for the whole that may have been in opposition to your personal beliefs.
Sure. First, public education is and has always been a nonpartisan issue. We must educate all of our students if we're going to have a thriving society. And everyone across the political spectrum, I believe, believes that to be true. Likewise, school board roles are also completely nonpartisan, and that's the world I've been working in, in education, for two decades. I know that everyone at this table, and probably most school board members across the country, commit to holding students at the center of board deliberation. And just as the administration and teachers hold students at the center, I welcome the opportunity to work in harmony with all of the board members as we continue to hold all students at the center of our decisions. I mentioned before that I serve on the State Board of the Michigan PTA, and recently, we have been provided an opportunity by the National PTA to increase the dues across the country. National PTA's perspective is it's $2 per member. That's a relatively low dollar amount in this day and age with inflation, et cetera. And yet, I know at least that one of my units, $2 per member is probably more than the unit is going to be able to sustain. You know, we have an opportunity to serve all families, and this particular school has a large number of low-income families, where I think the privilege of saying $2 is a little bit of money is a little extreme by national. That said, we also know that National PTA provides a ton of services to help increase membership across states and, and within units, and that getting parents involved is paramount to students' education. So I was conflicted on, do I vote for the increase because I know that they're going to provide more services and tools? Or do I not vote the increase, not get the services, but then hopefully those parents that have already joined will join again next year? In most of my decision-making process, I try to find less opportunity for what I call zero-sum game, where there's a clear winner and a clear loser. I try to open the aperture to say, there, is there a way to make a win-win here where it's not quite as painful for the winner and the loser? And in this case, Michigan PTA found the, the middle ground to say, if, if a unit is struggling with the $2 per member, the unit can eat the $2. Meaning, now, your, your school is going to have less money to operate your PTA, but you're still going to be able to reach the, the parents that are there. So with that compromised position, I voted, I intend to vote yes on the dues increase. National Convention is in a couple of weeks, so.
Hi, Susie.
Hi.
If you want to take a drink, you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All of you can.
It is amazing that you don't remember. Like, thank you for reminding me.
No problem. I've got it written down.
[laughter] So I was conflicted on, do I vote for the increase because I know that they're going to provide more services and tools? Or do I not vote the increase, not get the services, but then hopefully those parents that have already joined will join again next year? In most of my decision-making process, I try to find less opportunity for what I call a zero-sum game, where there's a clear winner and a clear loser. I try to open the aperture to say, is there a way to make a win-win here where it's not quite as painful for the winner and the loser? And in this case, Michigan PTA found the middle ground to say, if a unit is struggling with the $2 per member, the unit can eat the $2. Meaning, now, your school is going to have less money to operate your PTA, but you're still going to be able to reach the parents that are there. So with that compromised position, I voted, I intend to vote yes on the dues increase. National Convention is in a couple of weeks.
Hi, Susie.
Hi.
If you want to take a drink, you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All of you can.
It is amazing that you don't remember. Like, thank you for reminding me.
No problem. I've got it written down.
In addition to the superintendent of schools, there's also a full cabinet supporting our superintendent. Please provide your perspective on the strengths and weaknesses of our current cabinet and what you see as your role in ensuring strong leadership for our district.
Sure. As the other candidates have also mentioned, the cabinet looks different and will likely look different again. And so I'd like to spend more of my answer on how I think we interact with the cabinet and the role that I think we can play there. The, it is not the board's business, in my opinion, to micromanage the cabinet. It is board's business to hold the superintendent accountable for his or her management team. That said, in any good management relationship, there have to be feedback loops. And I view the role of board members as providing honest, transparent feedback loops to the superintendent when things are going well and when things might not be going as well as they hoped. It's, in my opinion, most important that we talk about trends when talking about cabinet-level roles, so not a one specific issue that could lead to some micromanagement, but instead, I would like to see more in this certain area based on these seven data points that have come to me over this period of time. I do think it is a gift to give cabinet feedback through the superintendent when a report is particularly clear or a report needs another layer of detail in order for us to actually govern the district appropriately. An example of that is, I would love to see a click or two deeper data around our student learning outcomes. And I think that that is something that the board would be able to provide requests for through the superintendent. And I welcome the opportunity to work with the new cabinet once established through the superintendent.
Good evening.
Hi.
What do you believe our current board does well? What do you believe the current board could do better? How have you contributed when joining existing teams to enhance what they do well and work to enact positive change?
It's very obvious you all are doing your homework, and I'm really grateful for that. I expect that you probably get, back when I used to work with school boards, like almost 20 years ago, they would get binders each week of materials that they needed to go through. I hope that the trees are not being destroyed that much still and that we do some things electronically now, but I expect that you get a lot of information that you need to quickly synthesize and it's clear that you're doing that. So thank you. I also love how visible that a lot of the board members have been at various events, ranging from sports to performing arts to, you know, graduations like at the ATP. Areas that I think could be improved, I would love to see more deliberation about the operations of the district in public so that we can increase transparency and increase accountability. An example of that might be in our bond work and/or the passing of the upcoming budget. Both of those are areas where I think that having some intentional deliberation in public would really be valued by the community. Can you repeat the last part of the question? It has something to do with a team.
Yep. I can. Please provide your perspective on the strengths, excuse me, have you contributed when joining existing teams to enhance what they do well and work to enact positive change?
Sure. Thank you for that reminder, three-part questions.
Yep.
Hard. So, once again, drawing on my Michigan PTA experience, I joined an existing Board of Directors, and some of those board members have served as many as nine years before I joined. And so there is a lot of humility, trust-building, listening, and learning that happens when you first join a team. And I'm proud to say that I've built those relationships with those board members that walked years before me and have learned a lot from them over time. At the same time, I also asked questions about where there are gaps, both in how our board was functioning and also how we were serving our members. And then, I put on my consultant hat and start working with my peers to try to solve those gaps. In this case, Michigan PTA asked me to lead them in a process of defining their five-year strategic plan, in which we addressed those gaps that the board had found present. And the whole time we were building that strategic plan, we intentionally made it an inclusive process where we were collecting both survey data from our members and also held some focus groups and released the report, the strategic plan, to all and asked for feedback in an open-ended form.
Thank you. How have you come to understand community issues or concerns as they relate to our school district? Further, what do you perceive your role is as a school board member and how do you know you're reaching all stakeholders for input? And finally, three parts again, I'm sorry. What do you believe the top issues are or will be for Wald Lake Schools?
So I mentioned earlier that to know, Susie, is to know that I'm trying to build teams and include people. That is true in all that I do, to the point that my husband and I host a neighborhood Halloween party every year where literally every person in the neighborhood receives an invitation. And the whole point of this is to allow neighbors to get to know neighbors. I think we live in a world today where it's really hard to know all your neighbors and really understand the nuance of each family that's living in community together. I'm, if you go to an event with me, you will find me picking the table with the people who don't normally get sat with and striking up conversation. Much to my more introverted husband's chagrin, there is not a moment when I haven't made a new friend. And that is true when it comes to working with students or with teachers. Actually, one of the reasons I was most sad that Ron got appointed instead of me is because I built some relationships with some high schoolers at Wald Lake Western and I kind of dreamed about giving them their diplomas. They said you did a great job, all of you. And I can give them a hug at a graduation party. But making an intentional effort to seek out voices that you are not normally provided access to is a core value of who I am and what I believe. In order to do that, you need to be open to hearing tough issues, whether that's the parent at the musical theater who says this rehearsal went too long and darned it, I was sitting in the parking lot for 30 minutes, longer than I intended to, to a colleague of mine who had significant concerns about voting yes on the bonds this time around because of what they perceived as broken promises from the 2019 bonds. My feedback to that person at the time was, you can believe in public education and support it and still have questions for the administration about what's going on. Both things can be true. Tell me more about what you're concerned about. That's the role, I think, of a school board member when you're trying to listen to all voices in the community. For the top issues facing the district right now, obviously nationally, school funding, teacher pay, teacher prestige, the respect of teachers as a profession is a thing that is top of mind for me always. I would love for us to become a destination district where we're able to recruit and retain great staff and instead of, right now, where it feels like we're losing some of our great staff. Related to that, I think the board and the new administration has some trust-building to do because of a perceived lack of stability right now. And so I'm committed to helping be part of that solution should I be appointed. Lastly, the, I believe Wald Lake must be preparing students for a life to live in the 21st century. That means providing more career in technical education. It means providing them with mental health supports and the ability to dialogue across difference. And it means giving them tangible skills so that they can go to whatever future they imagine. Acknowledging a world where we as adults can't imagine what five years from now looks like when it comes to AI, just one little example. And so designing, being part of a district that is preparing students for that unknown future is really important.
Thank you. Boards of education work as a whole and majesty work in committees. What committees do you believe would be beneficial to Wald Lake School District and where do you hope to serve if appointed?
So, in general, you didn't really ask this question, but my philosophy on governance is that a majority of the work, I think, should happen in a committee as a whole. And committees should be utilized when a small group of people need to go deeper on a particular issue to then provide a little bit more content or substance in the deliberations of the whole. So in general, I would love to see less standing committees and more ad hoc committees to solve a particular thing or that we are, or it's a particular moment in time. So as an example, I believe that when we voted in the bond for 2024, I think there's a bond committee. And that makes a ton of sense for a smaller group of people to be paying attention to those details alongside the cabinet and the community as we, you know, wisely spend $250 million. I also know that there is a policy committee that I think works on things like bylaws and how the board operates. That is not a particular strength of mine, when it comes to PTA at least, bylaws, but education policy is something that I am quite savvy with. So depending on how that policy committee is, duties are described, I may or may not be the best person for that role. I would love to work on the bond committee if I were to be appointed to the board and think that I have an interesting perspective at the moment as I sit at Wald Lake Western, but in the wing that isn't getting improved. So that is just one example of an area that, you know, I think hearing many voices is an important part of that bond committee oversight. In conclusion, because I remember it's my last question, thank you so much for the opportunity to sit here with you tonight. I look forward to, you know, hearing deliberation and the opportunity to perhaps serve with each of you. And Dr. Burnia, if it's the last time I see you, thank you for your leadership. You will be missed. And Dr. Lons, welcome to the new role. Have a good one.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a six-minute break. How's that? Just coming up with a number. Six-minute break, yeah. Okay, we're going to come back into session. We're going to start with our board discussion. Mr. Lippett, do you want to start for us? I see your writing. Do you want to start?
You knew she was going to do that to me. Well, first off, I enjoyed listening to all four candidates. And I, I was pleased to see that all four, you know, displayed a passion for the role, a passion for what they wanted to achieve with the, with the board and on behalf of kids in our community. So that was, that was great to see. It's always interesting to see the different ways they see that and how they would apply their own experience to be able to achieve that. So from my standpoint, I'll begin just by saying I think all four candidates have the ability to achieve in this role. I will say further that, in my opinion, two definitely stood out for the strength of experience and skills that they could immediately apply to their, to their board position, along with, I think, from where I sit, a perception of cohesiveness in a nonpartisan role that would make sense for the role, especially given all the things that we have to achieve over these next several months. So to me, I am down immediately to two candidates. And I am eager to hear the rest of the board's opinion about that.
Thank you. Ms. Fernandez.
Going in.
I'm going that direction, sorry.
So I echo the sentiment that everyone in this round and in the last round who's come before us has been very professional and respectful and really a pleasure to hear more from. And I know there are several who intend to, to run, and there are several open positions. So I just hope that no one gets discouraged because we've heard from an amazing bunch of people between this time and last. I will say, there's one response that, in particular, that I was delighted by. And I wasn't expecting that. And so I was very pleasantly surprised. I, as a candidate, Dr. Behrens described the top priorities and issues in a way that I think few folks who have even been very close to what's going on have ever articulated. And so I, you know, that caught my attention for sure. And, and again, I'm sure, I also have some other candidates that is in mind for me, but I just wanted to note that because I thought it was amazing. You know, the list was very well-rounded. It's all of the priorities that individually we've expressed and shared to each other. And so I'm not sure I expected that. And I was pleasantly delighted.
Ms. Levin?
I'm glad everybody got a drink. I'm glad that we changed up some of the questions so that we were able to get different answers and learn more about, you know, some of the candidates. They probably appreciate not having to repeat the same thing again. There's a couple candidates that I am keenly aware have been involved in the goings-on of the board when there was more or there wasn't the opportunity to sit up here at the table at stake. I think that when people are involved in something because it's what they want to do and there's no benefit to them for doing that, I think that speaks volumes. I think there's a couple candidates that have been here at the meetings for the last couple of years when there wasn't a seat at this table, you know, as an option for their presence. They were here simply because they wanted to be. And although everybody's busy, they've got things that they're doing, you know, this is a commitment. And I think that there's a couple people that we've interviewed that have shown that commitment and I think will continue to show that commitment whether or not they're selected tonight. But that stands out for me as being here, what is it character is what you are, how you act when nobody's watching? So I think that that speaks volumes to me and will weigh on my decision tonight.
Mr. Seigler?
Well, we have here, according to some of my colleagues in Oakland Schools, a gift. When we did the last round of interviews, you know, there are many of us that have a bad habit of watching other school districts' board meetings just to learn and understand and get ideas. And I received calls from three of my, three of our colleagues in other districts that said, wow, the answers were in-depth. You have people that are doing their homework and you are lucky. And I feel the same way tonight about that. What I liked specifically is some of the insight that I think we all gathered to help as we move forward from a public opinion and from individuals who are not sitting at this table, offering their insight, their thoughts, their, their recommendations. I know Dr. Lons was taking notes. And I think, you know, this will lead to a lot of other discussions as we move forward. Within that, I have limited it down to two individuals at this moment and look forward to further discussion.
Okay. I'll be extremely transparent. I agree that there, for me, there were two that could definitely hit the ground running. I was looking for advocacy for public education, looking for level of budget experience, looking for understanding the role of governance. It's a fine line to be able to provide feedback or ask questions. And I'm not saying don't ever ask a question, but once a question's asked, you know, it's been answered. And so, understanding also that role of the superintendent. And there is one candidate that sticks out at the top for me in being able to demonstrate that, being able to hit the ground running and helping us through this season. Don't think that the other three couldn't do it. I'm also looking for maybe fit within how the person has demonstrated collaborative nature. That's why I like to hear the examples and the leadership examples. So again, I'll be completely transparent. My number one candidate is Susie Crafton. And I'm not going to rank the rest of them, but I think that's the person who could benefit this board at this time. Mrs. Kaplan?
Thank you. What I'm going to say first off is thanks to all of you guys for coming out. I truly appreciate it, learning from you guys and listening to what your answers were. I find it very enlightening to say that all four of you are so engrossed and involved in Wald Lake that you know what's going on with regards to, you know, the community and with regards to what's happening around us. And I truly appreciate that perspective and hearing from you as a whole. So I thank you for all of that. I am going to, you know, I'm going to go back around because you all were very evasive about where you're standing. You know, we need to put names and things to the actions. But I am going to say, you know, first off, so, you know, I will go after Mrs. Casa Grande. I believe that, you know, Mrs. Crafton has the best experience to, you know, step right in and be part of this board. I feel that, you know, any of the other candidates would make a good addition to the board as well, but she currently is where I'm resting right this second. And I'd be interested to hear what everybody else has to say. Mr. Lippett?
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, as I was making my notes about, you know, we get this, this great sheet that allows us to rank various factors in what could, could make a great board member. And I think there's probably others we could add to this as well. And I started, you know, ranking the candidates against each of these. And I, I would say that, first off, all four candidates did reach the top of my ranking in one or, or more. However, Ms. Crafton ranked at the top in most all of my rankings. And it was pretty close, actually. But her experience with boards, the strong evidence, hit-the-ground-running financial experience that I think would be immediately valuable to the board impressed me as well. I take her at her word that she would seek to join and create cohesiveness on the board. I believe that from her. And because of all these things, I think she is the logical fit for me and she's my number one.
So I think one thing that as a board, it seems like my colleagues, and I don't speak for them, but it seems like we're trying to achieve is to have somebody in this role who will add something to the board, who, you know, can hit the ground running, as I've heard at least once. And I think Mr. Smith has that institutional knowledge from having served on this very board. And I think we're going to be losing some institutional knowledge if Mrs. Casa Grande, you know, if this is her last, you know, term, that I think is valuable to not have to necessarily start from scratch in terms of service on the board. There's no question that Mrs. Crafton has been involved in the district and, you know, I've worked alongside Mrs. Crafton personally. But if we, you know, I think one of the challenges when, you know, there were newer board members elected a couple of years ago was having so much brand-new knowledge. That was a big hill to overcome. And I think Mr. Smith brings immediate knowledge, having already done this job. And I think that, that he would, you know, bring the same budget experience. That's what he does for a living. I think that there, he would fit right in with, with the team that we've already got here and I think would allow us to, to really propel forward here quickly. And I, I support, you know, Mr. Smith in this role for that institutional knowledge.
Whoever, either one of you. Go ahead. Ms. Seigler?
Looking at overall involvement in the district, and again, just with the PTA activities, which are very vital to our district and to our buildings and experience, I would have to go with Mrs. Crafton. As I said, I think all four of the candidates are phenomenal. I am very thankful that we, as a district, have these individuals willing to come forward. And I actually do look forward to working with them, whether it be on committee or whatever we can do as we try to move this district forward under new administration and new superintendents.
Ms. Fernandez?
So I'd just like to suggest that some of the things that we heard, in particular from Dr. Behrens, are enormous considerations. And we know, as Shayna spoke earlier, there are folks who are here every month and then some who are participating and tracking along with what we do, even though maybe it's not a part of their job or it's not something that they're doing for a certain band kid or something that's ATP-related or some direct instance. And I've been here for almost two years now and never missed seeing Dr. Behrens at a meeting. She's worked with the cabinet members without any role or circumstance around that. And in particular, been diligent about following up on education and academic outcomes with Ms. Kohansky. And I think that is, you know, one of our many priorities as a board. You know, her data-driven approach and research capabilities and her inclination to dive into data is something that we've been talking about as a board for a very long time and something that we struggle with just because of the availability of data. And so I believe that those key competencies would be an immense help to us as a board. And so it's probably no secret that I feel strongly that she would be a great candidate to walk onto the board and, and add and contribute immediately.
So, Mrs. Kaplan, it appears that we have some support. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the board appoint Mrs. Susie Crafton to fill the board vacancy for the unfinished term ending December 31, 2024, effective immediately on acceptance of the appointment and the candidate be qualified for the office.
Support.
Any further discussion? Okay. I'll have to go for a roll call vote. Ms. Sobel?
Sorry about that. Mrs. Casa Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Fernandez?
No.
Mrs. Levin? Mr. Lippett?
Yes.
Mr. Seigler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kaplan?
Yes. Motion carries 4-2. Congratulations, Mrs. Crafton. Now we have public commentary. Okay. We've all spoken before, but we know you have three minutes to speak. And we will hear what you have to say. This is not a conversation. So if there's follow-up needed, someone from the cabinet or from the board will get back with you. And please keep your comments nice, please. Thank you. The first is Mr. Sawmiller.
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township, pronouns he, him, and his. Congratulations to Susie Crafton for becoming a new board member and perhaps condolences. I like to offer condolences for things like that. Wald Lake Schools is lucky to have such a broad-based, experienced people to choose from. That speaks well, I think, for our community. That's great. And it was, I kind of liked the new questions because I found out a little more personally about a lot of people I didn't know before. And I found that quite interesting. Hopefully, the board will be settled for a while, at least through the election, and that whoever is elected in November will be as good as tonight's candidates were. So I wish you all good luck and good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
I want to thank the board for enduring all these meetings. You guys are fantastic, all your effort and hard work. So thank you so much for that. And also congratulations to Susie Crafton for her appointment. And then one last thing I wanted to say. Being endorsed by a political group is not the same as taking money from a political group. And putting all politics aside, board members should be voting in the best interests of the entire district for all the students. Thank you.
With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting at 8:15. So thank you all. I appreciate it.